All right, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting into order.
Commissioner Alcaraz. Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Evans. Commissioner La Micah.
President.
Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Dodson.
President.
And Chair Silva.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Our third item is the review of the agenda. Are there any items that have arisen, staff, after the seventy-two hour posting deadline? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move forward. Item number four is public comment. This is a time period for anyone who wishes to make a comment on matters affecting the city of Seaside, but an item that is not on tonight's agenda. So if there's a different item, you can come to the podium and you can state your name and I'll give you three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. We have a minutes to approve for the April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Do we have comments from the commissioners or questions or emotion? All right, we have an emotion to approve.
I'm making motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, the minister approved unanimously. All right, next item of business is our item for tonight, which is use permit application number UP two thousand twenty-three dash twelve and architectural review application number AR two thousand twenty-three dash zero twenty-three Dustin Boge applicant and Danielle Patterson on behalf of Chartwell School are requesting certification of initial study mitigated negative declaration, adoption of the mitigated monitoring, sorry mitigation monitoring and reporting program, use permit approval for the two-phase Chartwell School Expansion Project and architectural review approval for the architectural design landscaping and lighting located at the existing Chartwell School Campus at twenty-five eleven dash twenty-seven hundred Numa Watson Road in the Public Institutional Zoning District. Before we start on this, because we have a, you know, a substantive presentation. I don't expect it to be an issue, but let's let's let staff as much as possible unless we misunderstand something, get through the presentation before we hold our questions to the end. And then, because we're going to have a presentation on the the use permit and then the architectural application, my guess is we may want to take a brief break in between the two if needed, if the first one extends for a healthy period of time. That said, let's give the floor to staff. Ms. Rocha.
Good evening, commissioners and community. I'll be presenting this project tonight. A couple more housekeeping items. We have kind of a new IT setup, so we might have a few hiccups, hopefully not, but if we do, there's two brains here to help on that. Let's get started. So the first portion that we're going to be looking at is the environmental component of this project. There is about forty slides, which I hope to move through rather quickly. The consultant is on the line to present the last handful of slides and following that is going to be staff's recommendation, which we would appreciate a direct reading from in your motion, just because it contains some legal requirements as far as approving a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So this slide provides kind of the legal overview and as well the last bullet, the scope of what we're looking at for this project. The legal overview provides you some information on what are our requirements as a city for moving forward with a project where initial study is completed. The environmental consultant finds that they can mitigate any impacts through mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Some of the elements that are looked at with an initial study include aesthetics, air quality, biological and cultural resources, noise, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. And provide a general overview of both the site and the scope of the project. And then the second half, after we move through this first half, will be the more in detail architectural review component. So twenty-five eleven Numa Watson Road, it consists of three parcels, approximately fifty-eight acres, relatively large site. The surrounding is includes a handful of uses. We have military residential to the north, to the east, both undeveloped land of Fort Ord and the veteran cemetery to the south includes a little bit more space of Fort Ord, more military housing to the south and then elementary school to the west. The site plan is zoomed out as we're going to get. It's both the existing and proposed school. So on the left circled in blue is the existing campus. In green is mid-campus, which will review as phase one and phase two is both the high school campus and a proposed guard shack at the entrance to the school's road. Zooming in again to phase one, which is referred to as a mid-campus expansion of both the phases, phase one and two. This is the smallest component. But you can also see the build-out proposed on the right of the high school campus, which we'll get into more detail on. Phase one, mid-campus buildings, one and two, building one is twenty-eight hundred and fifty square feet, referred to as a makerspace building and building two is a new fifteen hundred and sixty square foot classroom building. You can see in this aerial image or site plan that they're located adjacent to each other and on the floor plan, you can see how close they are to each other, about twelve feet apart with the area in between the buildings serving as potential additional outside classroom space with a retaining wall shown on like the mid bottom right of this image. Giving you a glimpse at the elevations and architectural finishes, which we'll get into more detail in the second portion of this presentation. This is for building one, going up to max height of eighteen feet, five inches. And then building two going up to nineteen feet, seven inches. Moving on to phase two, which is high school buildings A, B, and C, and associated site improvements. Building A is just under twenty-five hundred square feet, proposed at three stories and a max height of forty-three feet, ten inches. Building B, approximately eleven thousand four hundred square feet, also at three stories and forty feet, forty-four feet tall. Those two buildings at the second level become connected through outdoor deck walkways and continue on to the third level, which we'll see in some images coming up. And building C, located to the right and to the south of the proposed soccer field is a new gymnasium at two stories, just under twenty-two hundred square feet and a max height of forty-one feet, five inches. Here's a rendering to show some of those details, because it is in context which the architectural renderings of these buildings don't show some of the site elements. So in between buildings A and B, you have the drop-off for the vehicles happening on that round roadway and then also sorry, my red light's not working to point things out. Courtyards and associated site features, which again we'll get into on the architectural review portion. So then, little bit more details of what's going to be located in each of those spaces. Mix of classrooms, offices, labs, and administrative offices. But this gives you a feel for the flow on the site, for the open spaces being created, for the parking that's being extended and for the sports field and the gymnasium and the outdoor elements as amenities to the students. Pulling back, this is a rendering of those two buildings, as you can see on level two, where they physically connect with the deck slash walkways. Couple more views on to that and the outdoor spaces that are created through that as well as, you know, egress components. These renderings are very helpful in getting a feel for what it's going to be like when you pull up to the campus. This is, again, what I pointed out earlier of the drop-off area for the students. Shows how that's going to look. The materials are definitely easier to see in these renderings than on some of those other earlier drawings. Building C for the high school is the gymnasium and then we'll check out this rendering of it as well, which gives a better feel. Happening also during phase two, as referenced earlier, is the guard shack at the entrance of Numa Watson Road in the middle of the road for both entry and exit. Small two hundred and sixteen square feet provides office space as well as a restroom for whoever's staff there. Phase two also has a lot of site improvements and we'll go through some of those. So the outdoor recreational fields, both soccer and basketball, exterior lighting, which we'll also get to in more detail, tree removals, landscaping, and one hundred and seven new parking spaces, including those for EV and accessibility. Site lighting. They provided these photometric studies. The red shows essentially the throw that the lights will cast. So you can see the spacing of them, both for street and parking lot fixtures. There's a total of forty-three proposed, thirty-five of which are proposed at maximum height of twenty feet with the remaining eight proposed at a height of thirteen feet and that will come into play later during the architectural review, where there's a specific finding for allowing light fixtures to be mounted at a greater height than what is standard in the code. Continuing on showing the lighting in the other areas and the fixtures that are proposed. And then the soccer field lighting. This image also shows photometric study with the outermost line that you can see surrounding there and some of the numbers mentioned is as far as those lights have the potential of casting. The mounting height will be at both forty and sixty feet with a total of nine fixtures per pole. Here's those. The difference between the two is one is a medium cast and one is a wide cast to cover the entire field with eight of one and one of the other on each of the poles. Moving on to the tree survey, the area outlined in blue represents the limits of the tree survey for which there were three hundred and sixty-eight trees found on that site. There's a hundred and one proposed removals and one hundred and fourteen new plantings. Tried my best to highlight the tree removals on the site plan, so you can see that the majority of them are happening either in parking areas or in the footprints of buildings and then also a few on the portions of the site that are a little bit more steeper slope. And we'll hand this over to our environmental consultant to cover some of the mitigation measures and project components. Hello, Erin. We're ready for your presentation.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to be here with, to describe this project and the mitigation that we're proposing as part of the MMRP. I'm Erin Carwin with Denise Stuffing Associates. Just to touch on some of the potentially significant impacts that were identified and the proposed mitigation and and how those fit in into the MMRP, we'll go over that. So I'd like to discuss water allocation and availability. It's a complex process. Beth touched on the phasing of the proposed project. Chartwell currently has six point four acre feet of water allocated from the Marina Coast Water District and currently uses approximately five point two nine acre feet per year. As part of the project, Chartwell proposes to convert the existing grass field to save two point five acre feet per year and the remaining allocation is sufficient to build out phase one of the project, the mid-campus, which requires point zero three, zero point three seven acre feet per year and the proposed landscaping improvements, which are zero point five seven acre feet per year. While there's still remaining acre feet available, it's not quite enough to to build out the high school. So there's a shortfall of about one point three acre feet per year under the existing allocation. So mitigation measure MM utility dash one requires the school to acquire additional water prior to issuance of the building permit for phase two. Next slide, please. Thank you, Skiplan. There you go. Thanks. Beth also touched on the field lighting. There are obviously new lighting is proposed on the soccer field. The design will be compliant with the International Dark Sky Association, IDSA, and to minimize off-site spillage and glare. And Chartwell will be required to complete a lighting plan for city and IDSA approval and receive their design certificate and then complete the second phase to obtain the IDSA seal of approval. And that's highlighted in mitigation measures aesthetics one and two. Beth also just touched on the tree removal. Again, the project would require the removal approximately a hundred and one trees and the project is proposing a planting of a hundred and fourteen replacement trees with a minimum one-to-one replacement pursuant to mitigation measure by O two prior to the issuance of the tree removal permit. So a vehicle miles study, vehicle miles travel study was completed for the project by Hexagon Transportation Consultants. Under existing conditions, approximately sixty point three vehicle miles traveled per student VMT under the existing conditions increases to sixty-two point one VMT what occurred after full build-out. The mitigation measure, Traffic One identifies the preparation and implementation of a travel demand management plan, which emphasizes carpooling and van pooling with a goal of forty-five percent participation between staff and students would get us to the decreasing the percent increase by one point three as required in the in the study. The measures will include annual monitoring for at least two years to make sure that TDM implementation is meeting those performance standards and the VTM are being reduced as required. Lastly, we want to highlight, there was significant study, comprehensive studies for hazardous materials and we're on the former Fort Ord. That's always a concern. Wanted to let you know that we have, this site is not located on a site that is included on a list of hazardous material sites compiled to pursuant to government code section six five nine six two point five, the Cortezi List. A phase one environmental site assessment documented recognized environmental conditions or REC's, including fill of unknown origin, diesel contaminated soils, detection of contaminants and soil soil samples and noted the lack of previous testing for OCPs, which are organochlorine, chlorine pesticides, which is typical analysis done for for school sites. So detailed soil sampling was conducted as part of phase two environmental site assessment and additional site character characterization report was provided. These are all detailed in depth in the initial study and included as appendices to the document. The phase two found that diesel contaminated soils were limited to a single location and OCPs and other VOCs, which are volatile organic compounds were well below DTSC thresholds, which is the Department of Toxic Substances Control. And all potential impacts were found to be less than significant. So I'll hand it back over to you, Beth.
Thank you. For complete transparency on public comments, there was one public comment included in your packet because it was received before the agenda was published. And we included a brief description of that in the staff report. Today you also have in front of you public comments that were provided after the agenda packet was published for your review. Speaking specifically to the one that was received on May ninth, that's included as attachment four. It's regarding a chemical with the acronym of PFAS regarding contamination at former Fort Ord. In response to receiving that, we did a lot of research, one which included me reaching out to the essentially project planner who's been working on this site for a while, that Chartwell itself has initiated contact with to get their approvals through Daniel Ochoa and reviewed essentially where they're at in their phase. Also included as attachment five is a document that was produced by the Army who has control of certain site or elements out in former Fort Ord and they've done a huge report around fourteen thousand pages and after doing that report and identified some sites, I believe three in Marina and two in Seaside at a former fire station site, not at the Chartwell site. As that report is concerned, that they are currently still working to try to plan to how to address this concern. And we did do what we could do from our side, which is include a condition of approval on the project, which is the applicant has to comply with the rules and regulations of other governing agencies and provide proof of compliance to the city before we issue any permit outside of the discretionary actions that you're looking at tonight. And with that, that concludes my presentation. So if you have questions for me or the environmental consultant at this time, otherwise open up public comment and then I have a recommendation slide when you're ready for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, do we have any questions of staff? We'll just contain it to staff and the consultant at this time, if we have any related to their presentation before we move to the public comment period. Anything on your end down there? Okay, thank you. At this time, what we'd like to do is is give the applicant or applicant representative an opportunity to to come forward and make a comment. We'll give you up to five minutes to do so if you'd like. And then we'll open it up to general public comment following that.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. Chair Silva, I'm Danielle Patterson. I'm the current head of school at Chartwell and finishing my eighth year with the school. I'm here with a number of my amazing team members and parents and community members and our board chair Katrina Maestri. And I think it's important for me to just remind the room of the work that we do at Chartwell and why we are looking to expand our current campus. The school was founded over forty years ago for students with dyslexia and language-based learning differences. Over a significant amount of time, that population has increased in profile. We serve students now with severe ADHD, autism, intellectual disabilities in our lower school, as well as all of our high schoolers who now are able to access college and beyond. What we've noticed over the last ten years since the high school started is that our space is extremely limited, especially for our students who need to be able to have a level of strength-based learning that is well beyond what we are able to provide in such a contained space. And this would allow us to not only reach the students in Seaside and Monterey County, but also continue to provide teacher training, which is our extended outreach, which Jody, our director of teaching and learning, is here to talk to. When I came to the school in two thousand seventeen, there were seventy students. We now have just around two hundred and are at capacity at our current site and are now also a non-public school, which allows us to partner with public school districts to send students to Chartwell to be served, which is very new in our community. So public school districts can have students come and access our services. So I would just hope that you can recognize the long-term work that we do, but also just that we're very limited in our space and I'd love if you can share a spot.
Yeah. Hi, Jody Amadetz. So I'm the director of our Chartwell Teaching Institute. So we have experience at Chartwell at teaching literacy. And I don't know if you're aware, but about fifty percent of students in Monterey County are below reading proficiency. And so what we do is we have trained professional development with over three hundred teachers in Monterey Peninsula, all elementary school teachers. And already they've started to see improvement in student test scores. So we like to say that we are not a school with a mission, but a mission with a school and our mission is literacy for all. Not everyone can attend Chartwell, but we like to bring our practices forward to share them with as many people as possible.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're getting, oh, do we have any questions for them? Are they up here or no? Okay, perfect. This time we'll open up to public comment. What we'll do is we'll give everybody three minutes. Do we have a timer just so we're aware of that? Okay, so we'll give you three minutes. Please come forward, state your name and tell us what you have in mind. And don't be shy. Somebody's got to break the ice.
I may or may not need my notes. My a couple of years ago, my
State your name.
Oh, my name is Rachel Robbins and I'm a parent of a student first at Chartwell. He's in eleventh grade now and he is very talented in music and in literature, but he has some executive function issues. So going to Chartwell was what we chose at the time. And then as things went on, as I was looking for a job, I found out that I was qualified to be able to teach structured literacy there at Chartwell. So they did end up hiring me. I'm very thankful to be there. And if you want to know something behind the scenes, what is the school like behind the scenes? I'm just as thrilled with the school as a teacher as I was as a parent. As I've seen all of the teachers working so passionately to see these students succeed so that they're they're not just succeeding in their literacy and in their math, but they're also succeeding as people as they're connected with strategies for managing everything related to life, both in elementary and then in middle school and then in high school as well. I will say it's been difficult sharing. We share spaces. Every every classroom is used almost every single period. There's no breaks. So we we have libraries that are in our cupboards. And when we need a book, we can't just go to the library and get it. We have to go track it down in a cupboard somewhere. And so we're doing this and Chartwell's not about the money. They're they're about sharing literacy all across just, not just here or even in our district, but all up and down California as we meet the, as California needs to meet the requirement of of testing for dyslexia in California. That's a law now. And then you also have to train for it, you know, teach it. Anyway, I'm very proud of being, working at Chartwell. And I'm very proud of the progress that my son has made at Chartwell, which he wouldn't have been able to make otherwise. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Goldwasser. I attended Chartwell from second grade through to twelfth. And it made a phenomenal difference in my life. I started off, I came from Oregon and I was second, maybe third grade. I was reading preschool level but below. And just the turnaround that Chartwell gave me and the path to succeed. I wouldn't be where I am today. I wouldn't be working in tech. I wouldn't be have proficient literacy. I cannot thank Chartwell enough for what they gave me in life, the tools they gave me to succeed. the tools they gave me to succeed. And the school, I feel, just has such an important mission. And has so many students who have a similar success story to mine that and I think that an increase in the capacity and the capability to help more students is very important. It's just, it was, they're phenomenal. That's all the word I can give is that they're just amazing with what they do. And yeah. Having gotten the tools to help with my ADHD and my dyscalculia, dyslexia and time management, it just, they gave it all. They really did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joseph Shannon. I've been working as a teacher at Chartwell School for the last six years. I live in Santa Cruz and Chartwell is a place that is special enough for me to commute every morning, 40 minutes to get there. The mission that, that our school has is incredibly important. It's not served by other institutions. It's served by us and the population is served by us. And like Ms. Robbins said, we are occupying every square foot of space in our school, every hour of every school day. There is no extra room. And so this proposed plan will allow us to expand, but also to better serve the students that we have now, especially Phase One, with a maker space. And it will allow us to expand our experiential learning and our hands-on learning for the students with different learning profiles that need that to be able to succeed. And I just want to encourage the commission to approve it. It is necessary and it is an amazing place. And I would like to invite all of you to come out and see what we do sometime because it's pretty, pretty awesome.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Brianna Markward. And I am not only a teacher at Chartwell, but one of the parents of a child who greatly has benefited from the Chartwell Training Institute for Teachers. My second grader is one of the millions of children in California who is reading well below grade level. Last summer, MPUSD partnered with Chartwell. And as a third grader, she went into school reading at a first grade level with Chartwell's help, teaching their teachers how to teach. She left third grade reading on a third grade level. Expanding Chartwell would give them more space to not only have us help more students on campus, but to help more teachers learn how to teach literacy and take that back to their public schools. And I think that's an important part of the mission that just needs to be shared as a part of an amazing thing that we're able to do. And also I just want to brag, making 250% reading growth because her teachers were trained at Chartwell and learned how to teach literacy, because that's not something we learn as teachers in school anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Once the ice is broken, right?
Right? And then we start coming and you can't stop us. Good evening, my name is Sarah Chavez. I'm a teacher at Chartwell. My son was a former student at Chartwell. And my son too is dyslexic, was diagnosed in third grade, wasn't meeting any other goals. And it was Jody Amadis who roped me into it and said, let us try to help you. He is now completely thriving and doing well. As a teacher, I'm a college readiness teacher. I have the joy of teaching our neurodiverse students. Each one comes to us. We have dyslexic, dysgraphic, all sorts of things. And I would like to read you something that will be published in our graduation programs. And I invite you to attend our graduation and see our amazing students, which will be on June 6th. Chartwell's class of 2025 is a spectacular group of young people. These 16 graduates represent a wide range of interests, talents and beloved quirks. 10 of them played in sports and joined clubs at Chartwell. Eight of them held down paid employment during high school. Seven of them served on the school's leadership team. Five of them were on robotics team. Five of them enrolled in community college while they were still in high school. Four of them completed internships during their senior year. And all of them brought something unique and special to our class. For various points in their education, many of the graduates believed that college would never be an option for them. However, the class of 25 worked diligently to develop the skills, the strategies and mindset to continue to thrive. As a result of their hard work, they were admitted as a group to 63 different four-year colleges or universities. There was 120 total acceptances into a four-year college. And collectively, our 15 students earned $5.6 million in scholarships. Please help us celebrate them and building this for more students. We have no more room. We can't serve anybody else unless we get some classrooms. It is a problem and we do want to continue to serve those neurodiverse students and let them go and be a part of our community and a part of our future for all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Peter Placencia. I'm a representative with the North Park Carbonation Union. It is hard to follow that. Chartwell seems, it sounds like a good grade school to go to. My son, he does have problems reading. It's too bad that, you know, we live in San Diego County. But I just want to encourage the owner that when, if this project does go forward, to hire a responsible contractor who pays every standard wages and provides resources back to the community. And that also provides healthcare and opportunities for apprenticeship programs. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nina Beatty. I think it's critical that Chartwell School continue the incredible work it's doing. I think what they're doing, it's obvious. And I've followed this. I had a dyslexic friend in college who struggled through. She persevered and it was, I think, with the support of a lot of us that she was able to actually achieve a degree, but it was very difficult for her. This is critical work. This location is a problem. And I wrote to you about the known toxicity of this site. Final preliminary report on PFAS contamination at Fort Ord. And in that report by the Army, they stated that at the Chartwell School, there was for at least 10 years significant dumping of PFAS-containing firefighting foam, exceeding what some of the disasters in other areas of the United States have encountered with known health effects, known very, it's this very, very toxic substance. Fort Ord is a superfund site. And I saw it mentioned once in all the pages. And it's not just a garden variety superfund site. It's a national priorities list superfund site. The Pentagon, the EPA, Department of Toxic Substance Control has a terrible track record and have, and we've, the public's been lied to repeatedly. The push was to develop the former Fort Ord, they say, and minimize issues. And that's happening everywhere at Hunter's Point, Treasure Island. The Army kept very poor records and there's been a cover-up of toxins that were dumped there, including Agent Orange. And now it's coming out of the Agent Orange toxicity, not at this site, but at Fort Ord. Environmental Investigation Services said that the objective of this assessment was to evaluate the subject property for potential recognized environmental concerns. And I'd like to know where they were by not mentioning this report, which came out in February of 2022. They also said this assessment did not include analysis of indoor air quality and has been found at these areas around Campus Town and other areas in the shopping center with Kohl's and Michael's, is that there's high levels of toxicity coming from underwater, underground plumes of contaminants. So if they didn't assess indoor air quality there, that's an issue. Regarding any subsurface investigations and sampling and analysis data, our opinions are limited to specific areas. There's high amounts of benzene, why? And there's also concentrations, I will. What's known is that, what's concerning is the synergy of other things and other activities that the Army has not recorded at the site. And these students and staff are being exposed to those toxins for years and years. That's a shame. An alternate site should be found for this school, this incredible school.
Hi, my name's Forrest Cook. I'm a professional geologist and I work for EIS. We are the ones that have done the sampling and all of the environmental work that's been done on this project so far. And I just want to push back a little bit on the previous speaker and what she's saying. She's just mischaracterizing what is happening. We are not trying to build on a toxic waste site. And I think most importantly, what, my son also goes to school here. And when we started working here, we were hired. They didn't know, I know all these teachers, they did not know I was going to be involved. My son has been at Chartwell for three years. We love the school. And the insinuation that we are just trying to build on a toxic site is, actually has me kind of upset. We have poured our heart and soul into this. We have done extensive research and soil sampling under guidance from the DTSC. And we're doing everything in our power to make sure this is done appropriately and everybody is safe. Lastly, with respect to the new information, the PFAS, we were just made aware of this. We have brought it to the DTSC. They are reviewing it. We are reviewing it. And we will do everything in our power to make sure this is done safely and whatever needs to be done. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
All right, do we have any other couple of comments? I'm gonna, okay, keep it open as long as somebody might want to come forward.
Hi, I'm Peter Lippman. I'm the Senior Project Manager for Environmental Investigations Services. Just to hit on what Forrest mentioned there, we have, Chartwell School entered the voluntary cleanup program with DTSC. So nothing was meant to be, you know, held from the public eye. All the reports are available to the public and have been during the whole process. DTSC requires a very strict program for school sites that, that we followed the whole process. Regarding this report that was provided by the previous person who commented, we, we do a search in our initial study of the site. And we were required to check all the federal, state and local databases. And we checked on the Fort Ord database. And this report was not in any of these areas. This report came to our attention through that investigative reporter's article. And it was not, the reference to Chartwell is a, is a vague reference. It is not a specific location that they discuss in that report. And that report that was provided is an abridged version of the report. It's 33-page, so it's missing, you know, key things like who was interviewed, logs from those interviews, so that you could get, you know, exact data, which we're used to dealing with. And if you look at other documents on Fort Ord, there is some PFAS contamination. It's approximately two, two, two miles north of our site in former, where the airport was and a former burn pit area. And then, but those, all those sites are up there. Chartwell is not discussed in any of the known PFAS areas. Once we did find out about this information, we proactively contacted DTSC and said, and provided them with the report. They didn't have the report either. Just to be sure, we checked on the Fort Ord, the FORA, which is a database for Fort Ord. It's not on there. It's not on anything to do with Fort Ord. It's not in any state federal, state databases, federal databases or the Presidio database, which because the, the title of the report is the Presidio of Monterey and Ord Military Community. So we'll, like Forrest said, we're going to work with DTSC. We're going to get to the bottom of it and find out where the actual potential PFAS area is in relation to our subject property. And that's all. Just want, we're diligently working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we're going to do a going, going, gone. All right, we're going to close our public comment period. Yes. Oh, we have somebody online. I forgot we're doing that again. So we will not close our public comment period quite yet.
PK, would you like to comment?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak in support of this project. My name is PK Diffenbaum. I'm Superintendent Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. Chartwell has been an excellent partner to the school district over the last numbers of years, supporting, as one of your speakers said, our teachers in structured literacy and best practices, which in turn has helped us support our students who are struggling to be more proficient readers. Recently, we approved at the board level, a dyslexia screener, which is a partnership through the UCSF. That Chartwell was really intimately involved in developing. The dyslexia screener is now a requirement across California. But we are going to benefit greatly from Chartwell's expertise in using the screener to ensure that our students get the support that they need and that our teachers can use the data from the screener to properly intervene and support our students. So Chartwell's been a great partner. We don't view them as a competitor. We view them as a partner. Their success will only strengthen and, and support our success. And so we urge you to please support this project. Allow them to grow and to flourish. It will only help students on the Monterey Peninsula. So thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, PK. All right. Anybody else online? Okay, so I'm going to assume that nobody has changed their mind in the audience and wants to come up. We're going to go ahead and close our public comment period at this time. So at this time, staff will come back. And I'm sure we're going to have a couple of questions for staff as we deliberate on this. Any questions for staff?
Just, could you restate again the, you said that it was going to be mentioned about the investigation of, of the chemicals up there? And that would be- And that would be part of the statement that we approved tonight. Could you clarify that again?
Let me try to answer what I think you're asking. So there's a condition of approval regarding that Chartwell show us proof of approval from DTSC or any other agency that they need approval from prior to us granting any permit outside of the discretionary permits tonight. We included that as a condition of approval and kind of parallel to this, but not because it's on a different timeline, they're working with DTSC to go through what is required. The DTSC process has about 13 tasks that they outline in order for a project to go through and make progress to get to the point of eventual approval. They're on task three now. There are 13 total tasks outlined that were provided by Daniel Ochoa of the DTSC. And that also includes a SEQA analysis by DTSC for that aspect of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions on that end? So, and I have a question. In the Phase Two environmental assessment that was done, does that not include testing for PFAS?
So the thing right now with PFAS is both attachment five that I gave you, which was from the Army. Included the first look into it by the Army. 14,000 page report identified sites where there was known usage of it in the past. And there was also another report done, whether at an earlier or later date, by the Presidio of Monterey. And both of them are working together. And it, PFAS are considered an emerging, emerging chemical, which means that the limits aren't defied yet, defined yet, except for where it applies to groundwater. So through DTSC, you know, what the Army and the Presidio are coming together on now might loop into what DTSC is requiring of the process, given that they're in that early of a stage of going through those 13 tasks.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, so why don't we bring it back up here for discussion and deliberation amongst us? And then we can ask staff if we have any questions, especially if we are crafting a resolution where you gave us some language and stuff, but if, if we had any further input on that. We'll start at your end. Any, any thoughts on the, the project as a whole or concerns?
No, no concerns. I mean, I, I think it's for a great cause and I hope, I'd only, this real concern that I have was about the findings of late, recent ones, but there's so many pages out there, right? Being able to come down and kind of look at it a little more, perhaps. For an unknown reason, how should we do it? Even though, you know, we have professionals here saying that, so I, I'm not a professional, so I would give a recommendation at least.
Mr. Mike, how about you?
I have no issues with the project. I, I've been to the school before in my previous job. And anybody, everybody I talked to there, the teachers are just wonderful. They are. I mean, they go over and beyond what they're required to do. So I've been impressed with the, the school.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I would echo that. This is a great institution and we're lucky to have it here in Monterey County. And I'm also satisfied that this isn't going to move forward until there's that thorough environmental investigation that's ongoing, is completed and approved. So I have no concerns.
Thank you. You know, I, I got involved in the redevelopment of Fordord back in 1997. And, you know, when, when Fordord first closed and the, the mission was stated for its redevelopment, the slogan, I guess, would be, would be swords to plowshares. And this project is exactly the kind of project that was envisioned when Fordord redevelopment was announced. A purpose that would serve the community, a purpose that would redevelop the, the, the sites. Institutional and economic, in addition to economic development conveyances, there were institutional and educational development conveyances. And this is sort of right in the package of what was envisioned. So, I mean, I'm thrilled with what you've been doing already and I'm thrilled to see where you're going. I, I think it's tremendous. I have, I have two daughters with ADHD. I had the benefit of a wife that homeschooled, so we were able to customize our education for our kids. And, and so we perhaps didn't need this, but I'm learning so much more about that because one of them has some neurodivergence as well. And she just finished Organic Chemistry II as the top student in her class at MPC as a high school junior. So I get it. I get it. And, and so sometimes that, that accommodation, that special handling that our kids need to learn the way that they're designed to learn is, is absolutely tremendous. So I mean, I think what you guys are doing is phenomenal. I also recall that when I first started on Fordord, we were supposed to put a golf course of residential units on the Parker Flats. And, and that didn't happen. But when it was retooled and we moved the project to the East Garrison, the, the DTSC, everybody involved was amenable to institutional uses in areas that might even have some concerns. And largely because institutional uses capped the site, they, they, it's different than Johnny digging in the backyard. And, and so, I mean, I think that, that your use and a condition of approval that's built into the project that says we're going to figure this out. Tonight, we're here for the discretionary part, and that's whether or not it's an appropriate use for the site. And in my opinion, it's an incredibly appropriate use for the site. It's already being used for that and we're simply granting you potentially an expansion so you can continue with your mission. So I, I see no issues whatsoever. And I think, given staff's language to allow for the obvious screenings that need to be satisfied, because I'm guessing as a school, you don't want the liability of putting kids on a site if there's anything unsafe within anyways. So you're going to do your due diligence to protect the, the students. Not to mention, a lot of the people in the audience who work there have students there, in which case you have a double interest in doing so. And so I, I see no concerns whatsoever. I think the only concern I have is, you said you wanted in a resolution, specific language? And I don't have, okay, oh, that's it? That was easy. Okay, so that is one of the slides that was in here. I just wanted to make sure we had the proper resolution so we make a motion that we can state it the way you want to, so that it's properly stated. Okay, with that said, I, I mean, unless somebody has a different opinion than I'm hearing up here, I would entertain a resolution, or I'm sorry, a motion for a resolution. Does somebody want to do that or you want me to take it up? Okay, I'll do it. I move that we certify the initial study mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and authorize filing the notice of determination with the Office of the Monterey County Clerk and the State Clearing House. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we got two seconds, so that's even better. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, you have unanimous approval. Congratulations. That said, I still have I do have to state that an appeal can be made. An appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of this decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk. An appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. Okay, so that's one of our issues with the two issues. Given that we have very short meetings here often, so tonight we're an hour in, so this is a longer meeting. Let's take, let's do like a five minute recess, just so if anybody needs to use the restroom, get a drink of water, we can do that. And we'll reconvene for the architectural review part of this in just a moment. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order and pick up the architectural review portion of it. If I can encourage everybody to sit down, or if you're going to have your conversation, we'll take them outside. All right, Ms. Roshi, take it over.
All right. Moving on to the use permit and architectural review for this project. Use permit is required in this zone for any school, private specialized education. And architectural review is required for all new non-residential construction, landscaping, and lighting. This project went with the alternative to staking and flagging, which is putting up a project board. That is because the majority of the structures were over the, over 25 feet in height would be considered to be somewhat of a burden to put up physical staking and flagging for all those three buildings, or maybe even four. So that sign was erected at least 14 days in advance of the hearing and it's located to traffic that passes by on Normandy, nearest the intersection of Normandy and Newman Watson Road. A bit of a reminder about the existing campus opened in 2006. There are 205 students and 72 faculty and staff. And then from 2019 through 2022, which most of you should have a memory of, is that there were a series of use permits approved for anything from modular classrooms to converting a modular into a permanent, as well as storage sheds. And part of the reason why we went through SEQA on this, not just the size of the new high school, but there wasn't, there is a SEQA exemption for schools expanding. And they didn't hit that threshold with any of those projects, but with this one, of course, they did. So the proposed Chartwell campus is also proposing to increase the student body from 205 to 400 students. And to increase the faculty and staff from 72 to 112. And Phase One and Phase Two are the two components of the project as mentioned earlier. Purpose of architectural review is for the commission to review architectural considerations, character, quality of design, architectural relationship to the site, materials, fencing, list goes on. Covered this in the first round, but a reminder of Phase One for the mid-campus, two buildings, 2,850 square feet and 1,560 square feet circled there on the right of that site plan. We're going to look at more of the floor plans for these spaces. So top building, Building One, the maker space that you can see on both the left and the right with restrooms and other facilities in the center. And then Building Two has the two classrooms that are separated by that common walkway with the retaining wall on the lower right. Looking into the materials, they're describing this as coastal modern, modern architecture. Both mid-campus buildings, which are going to be sited within 12 feet of one another, will feature shed roofs with a 312 slope and finish with a charcoal gray standing seam metal roof, which you see there at the top. Each facade of the buildings features at least two exterior materials and colors with a stucco body finish in Sherwin-Williams Natural Choice and/or accents in Barcelona beige. Additionally balanced with a product called Wood Tone Rustic Series, which is lap siding in river rock or a semi-transparent sand and chestnut. The stucco portions on the buildings have intentional, kind of informed, like controlled joints that serve to emphasize both the architectural design and bring a different scale to the building, creating more visual interest than if it were to just be plain stucco. So as you can see, you know, the windows in the middle image with those lines running across, mimicking that scale and also breaking up the facade. You see that on the bottom as well, with the windows creating that grid and then above the door as they mimic that grid in those buildings. Let me actually go back onto the light fixture. Cylindrical black 15 inches will be mounted on the building, located near the entrances and also just complement the overall style that they're proposing here. See a few more images of Building One. And Building Two also uses the same materials, just in a different style, but still complementary. Moving on to Phase Two, which are the high school buildings, A, B, and C, and associated site improvements. Again, a reminder of the square footage and stories of those proposed structures. I don't want to show this image again, just because it's a really nice rendering, but it also reminds you of all the site improvements that will be happening to both connect these buildings, create a campus-like feel that is going to encourage people moving across the site, a safe environment. And will also complement the architecture with the plantings that they're doing and the outdoor spaces that they're creating to be used at all points. Although we can't read all of the room details on there, I did provide a summary of what is included in Building A on the top. And then Building B, we're looking at Level One of three right now. So offices, the nurse station, meeting rooms, and Building B, art studio and classrooms. Moving up to Level Two on Building A, which is the top space. We also have a library, more classrooms and offices. The gray area is the deck connecting the structures at that level. And Building B has more classrooms, labs, and a cafe. Moving on to Level Three, more classrooms on Building A and a faculty lounge. Building B continues with the science classrooms and labs. And again, the deck connecting those portions for access across to those two buildings and spaces. So in between classes, kids will be hanging out there and then also using it to get from one spot to the other. There's materials that are proposed. Oh, and apologies to the applicant, I have your material board, but it's been ages since we've had a physical material board. But if you do want to see it, we can grab that for you. Materials and colors that are proposed. And when we looked at the mid-campus, the guard shack, looks like he knows where he's going. All of these share like a unified material palette. They're complementary to each other. With Buildings A and B being physically connected through walkways and decks, it distinguishes them from the standalone athletic center. And there's the primary materials that are being used on that building. And then additionally, let's get to those renderings. So here's showing those again in these more clear images than the line drawings that were in the plans with the colors, the landscaping in, various elements of those buildings. Rotating around again to the drop-off area, showing somewhat of the main entrance to the new high school campus. Another rendering here, just highlighting the physical elements and materials of the site. And then pulling back again to these renderings, showing the elevated decks connecting. And again, the images that we saw before as well, showing the scale and massing of those two buildings and how they're connected. Moving over to the gymnasium, which is Building C on Level One. You have the basketball court, the gym, exercise rooms, locker rooms. And on to Level Two, but smaller, still showing Level One below, but offices and classrooms on the left side. Here again is a rendering of the high school building. And also the line drawing version that was done. Guard shack, as mentioned earlier, relatively small functional structure to be placed at the entrance of the campus. Matching the materials used on the mid-campus portion, although being constructed during Phase Two. And then moving on to landscaping. Considerations include color, coverage, location, species, native. Low water usage is encouraged and sometimes required if they have to meet other regulations through the Water District. So let's move through some of this. So let's move through some of this. Um, the legends on the right kind of point you towards. Some of the elements that are being proposed. So in addition to the replacement tree plantings of a hundred and fourteen, which. You know, make the scale of those buildings more relative to human scale uh, in time by bringing those down. Planted all around the buildings, as you can see on the plans, um, both on the left side of buildings A and B. And then on building C, as well as trees to provide shade in the parking areas. Um, they incorporate a variety of native and low-water plant species throughout the site. Non-irrigated native grasses and wildflower seed mixes are proposed in buffer zones. Um, which you can see rendered on the plans. As well as the bio-retention areas, which are the blue areas with the number one on them. And the buffer zones are rendered in the crosshatched lime green. Which you can see around some of the building perimeters. And then a woodland understory of native ground covers and shrubs is going to be planted under the oaks. They're going to be introducing with those plantings more than ten additional native species that will support habitat and require minimal irrigation. There's a- accent ground covers and native grasses that will be planted along selected building walkways. And within the parking lot islands as well below those trees. The bio-retention basins that I called out as number one are distributed across the campus. And they're designed to support stormwater management using regionally appropriate vegetation. Turf is going to be limited to a small area adjacent to building B. Um, there's going to be a little amphitheater where you see number eleven, and then the small turf area adjacent to that. And then additional outdoor amenities, which are listed in the far right. Legend and numbered throughout the site include patio, outdoor patios for outdoor classrooms. Um, ground level deck with seating with integrated planting into those seating fixtures. And a lot of built-in bench seating adjacent to um, landscape and tree plantings as well. And then they have the decorative use of paving and decomposed granite surfaces to help define more functional zones. Increases the aesthetic appeal and guides pedestrian movement throughout the site. Moving on to site lighting, um, lighting considerations for you to look at, which are also analyzed in the staff report. Includes the proposed placement of fixtures on the buildings and on other areas of the site, the types of fixtures and illumination levels. Going through what we saw earlier, a reminder on the functional lighting proposed on the site for. Guiding one up to the property from Numa Watson Road. As well as around the proposed high school campus, um, providing illumination for the needs. Because there will be some night classes as well as activities happening in the gymnasium and soccer field. Again, a reminder on the soccer field lighting with the nine fixtures per pole. Both mounted at both forty feet and sixty feet. Again, a reminder of the mitigation measures uh, in the environmental report. That require a whole other uh, level of certification and detail on that before anything moves forward. Reminder of the fixtures, just again showing the types and the power that they provide to. Give that outdoor field the lighting that's necessary. And I alluded to this earlier, um, the municipal code regulates the maximum height of freestanding. Light fixtures to sixteen feet, but it also contains the following provision, which I will read verbatim. When not located adjacent to a single-family residential zone, the commission may grant exceptions to the maximum height. Of freestanding outdoor light fixtures with the finding that the proposed height is consistent with surrounding land uses. And is compatible with the existing or proposed surrounding structures. And did include, it's in the staff report, it's also in the resolution for the use permit and architectural review. This required finding, essentially, um, the first lighting plan that was shared of Numa Watson Road. Near the guard shack shows the, the cast and the throw of that light. And although north of that property is military housing, you're looking at it being separated by the right-of-way. Of Normandy Road, as well as the first fixture, the distance between those two. Um, the first fixture and the boundary of the residential properties is about sixty-five feet. And then elsewhere, we're just increasing that. Once you get to the soccer field, you're talking hundreds of feet of being away from having a. Any even potential impact on any nearby residential use. And then. Do want to uh, share the video that was provided by the applicant. This is related to um, also what we looked at for the staking and flagging alternative. Um, but it also provides you with a very good idea of how the lighting will not be visible. Essentially from some of the surrounding major roads like General Jim Moore or Normandy. It's a quick, short video that gives you those two views, more so focusing on the height and massing of the buildings, which you'll see. For those not to be visible until you actually enter the site, so you can imagine for the light fixtures that are at both twenty feet and thirteen feet tall. As well as the soccer light fixtures and the mitigation measures that we have in place, that that impact will be minimal if even uh, existent. Kind of shine, you know, in a make-believe world, if vegetation and hills were to be removed, then yeah, it might be visible. And then we'll get back to the slideshow in a second and we'll review, not in detail. Um, but just a slide regarding the use permit findings, which of course are made in full in the staff report and also in the resolution. So just acknowledging that the evidence for all of these findings were made in support of the project. And again, included in the other elements of the report and the resolution. I'm then landing on the recommendation for this, and I'm here for questions if you have any about the design, landscaping and lighting.
I thought it was a great presentation, answered a lot of my questions.
Yeah, just a quick question.
Alert them to what? Uh, we did our standard three-hundred-foot notice to all physical. Um, addresses, not owner addresses, which is typical, but to physical, so we got all the army properties. And that was really the only ones that fell into the three-hundred feet. Uh, no, there weren't.
I was just curious, um, and and maybe this is a question for applicant. It, with the three-story building, is, are there elevators? I didn't think, I didn't think I see, saw any, so okay. This, I got a nod out there, so yeah, I just, I, I was probably looking in the wrong place and the floor, the floor plan was pretty small, so.
And yeah, if I may, we did receive the material board, so if you want to see, um, you know, even though it may look like wood, it's metal. The durability of it, I'm going to hand that to you now.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, that said, while you're doing that, why don't we invite, if the applicant or applicant representative wants to come up and make any further presentation on this, we'll give you five minutes to do so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Dustin Bog, uh, representative for Chartwell. I I have to, I have to tell you, in thirty-five years, I've never had a planner uh, and city do an eighty-page presentation. So my whole presentation for you is already provided. Uh, and thank you to Beth for doing all that work and for Andrew for working through this process with us. Um, I think specifically leave you with a couple of, you know, notes. One, um, you know, Chartwell knows that this is a spectacular site in the city of Seaside. And has done, gone through extreme measures to make sure that we're, you know, good stewards of that land and we're respectful of what's available. And at the same time, trying to get enough use so that we don't need to sprawl, and so that's why you're seeing the three stories. The, the Chartwell um, leadership has spent a tremendous amount of effort. In making sure that this is the best of classed architecture and something that the city of Seaside can be proud of for a very long time. And at the same time, very functional, welcoming, um, and conducive of the Chartwell learning process. And, which is a bit of a tough, you know, uh, uh, you know, eye of the needle type thing. So I think additionally, um, as far as the material board goes, we spent a lot of time uh, thinking about the climate here. As you guys know, uh, it's a very wet area, it's, and up where they are, they get a fair amount of fog. Uh, there's a fair, fair amount of salt in the air, and so we've been very thoughtful about selecting materials that have long longevity, very, very durable and don't rust. Uh, so that you don't look up in five years and see, you know, the streams of rust running down the buildings. Uh, you've heard everything that I could possibly say about Chartwell. Uh, the only thing left is that I'm a parent as well. And it's nothing short of, of a miracle what Chartwell's done for my son. Uh, in fact, we picked up and moved here in order so, or that my son could go to Chartwell. And this year, he's graduating and going to a really uh, well-regarded private college with a scholarship. And was accepted to all schools that he applied to. So I'll spare you the time tonight, but it's a pretty profound experience. Uh, in addition, uh, development team is here for questions, so if you have more questions, we do our best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I had a quick question, and you, you, is, is the, is the Chartwell logo the, the two branch, the branched trees or something?
It's like one tree.
Okay. So, so the two, the two orange or red trees that are framing sort of the main entry, those play to the logo. And then the Y that's repeated everywhere on it plays to the logo. Okay, very cool. I saw that, that was, that was neat. All right, any other questions of the applicant before we open into public comment? Okay, so we'll do this, we'll open it to public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on this project, please come forward, state your name, you'll have three minutes to do so. I think, I think that the. The folks that might have had something to say have come and gone. All right, so we'll close it and we'll bring it back up to the commission. If we have any questions of staff. We can do that now, but otherwise we can discuss amongst ourselves and entertain a motion. I mean, I think from my perspective, you know, the, the, the CEQA part, which we did, kind of the, the biggest piece. I think I said everything I wanted to say about our support of the project. I think the architecture looks tremendous. I would simply add, I've done research on the longboards, and although they're aluminum, you have to wash them annually. Or they do not warranty them against rusting, so just a heads up. But you're maybe far enough removed that, from the coast that it's not an issue, but yeah, it, it's a really cool product. And um, I think the rest of the architectural stuff looks great, and I think your footprint, obviously you preserve your, your impact on the site and everything. So, um, you definitely have my support. Anything else, guys?
Uh, I would support everything that you just said, and that would be pretty much all I could add to it. I agree.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the draft resolution to approve use permit application number UP twenty twenty-three dash zero one two. For the Chartwell School Expansion Project and approve Architectural Review Application Number AR twenty twenty-three dash zero two three. For the architectural design, landscaping and lighting. Second, second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have unanimous approval. Congratulations, guys. That's exciting. I do have to um, read that an appeal shall be submitted. And if somebody wants to make an appeal, appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of this decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk. And appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is report from commissioners. Do we have any reports, gentlemen?
Anything?
Okay, how about reports from staff?
Just a question, um, so it looks like we don't have any items scheduled for the first meeting in June. I just wanted to do a quick poll for June twenty-fourth and July ninth. And if, I know we're getting around the July fourth holiday, if anyone has any uh, time off that they're expecting to take around that time.
I don't have any complaints.
All right, good to know. That's all I have.
All right, item number nine is adjourned. Do we have a motion? All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we adjourn, thank you.